A warm greeting to everyone in the name of Jesus Christ of Nazareth. This is Pastor Shang Asa. By the grace of God, we will be embarking on a topic tackled the law of subjection. We are founded in Romans, chapter 13, verse number one, which reads as follows: "Let every soul be subject to governing authorities; for there is no authority except from God, and the authorities that exist are appointed by God." Before we can start, let us take a brief moment to pray. Heavenly Father, in the name of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ of Nazareth, we humble ourselves before you, oh God, thanking you for this opportunity that you have created to pour out your heart once again to us. We are praying that our hearts may be open and our minds may be changed by your word today. Cover us, Lord, as we come before you for the grace that is allotted for us today in the name of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ of Nazareth. Amen. We are founded in Romans, chapter 13, verse number one, which reads as follows: "Let every soul be subject to governing authorities; for there is no authority except from God, and the authorities that exist are appointed by God." Before we can start, we will have a look at a few definitions. We are going to define two terms that are central for our understanding as we lay the foundation for the teaching. The first term is law, because from the scripture that we have read, this is Apostle Paul writing to the saints in Rome. He is speaking more on the righteousness of God. The entire theme of the book is about the righteousness of God. So when it comes to chapter 13, he is now referring to the external government that they are placed under according to the sovereign will of the Lord. Because when you look at the word of God in 1 John, chapter 5, verse number 19, it says, "For we are children of God, but the entire world is under the control of the evil one." So even when the Lord spoke, as he prayed in John, chapter 17, he prayed that we may not be taken out of the world, but may be kept in the world. So inasmuch as there is authority that is in heaven, we are also subject to earthly governments. But before we can go forward and have a look at the spheres of government, let us define these two terms. The first one would be the law, because when the scripture speaks about governing authority, the agency or rather the tool for governance is the law. So what is the law? A law can be defined simply as the rule established by authority. Alright, so that is an organ or rather the device that is set by authority to establish order, because the absence of the rule of authority equals anarchy, equals disorder. And the second term that I want us to define is the term "subject", as it is used in the word in the scripture that we have just read, understanding that we are taking from Greek. So the original term that is translated as "subject" in that particular passage of scripture is the term "hupostasso", which is basically a combination of two terms. It's a combination of the word, the root called "hupo". Now "hupo" simply means "under", and it also gives a connotation of placing something beneath. And the last fragment or the second syllable is the phrase called, or rather the root word called "thasso", which means "set" or "to arrange an order". So "hupostasso" simply means, it's a term that speaks about the arrangement from a place beneath. We are going to appreciate the meaning of this term as we go forward, but it will help if we could just have that pattern of thought as we move on. Alright, so if we look at the Holy Scriptures like in the book of Ezra, if you want to illustrate or have a better understanding of the term "law", we can look at the law as decrees, because in a state or rather a domain where a king reigns, the word of the king is "law". So now looking at the scripture in the book of Ezra, chapter 1, verse number 7 to verse number 8, reading from the New King James, it says, "The king Sariah also brought out the articles of the house of the Lord, which Nebuchadnezzar had taken from Jerusalem and put in the temple of his God; and Sariah, king of Persia, brought them out by the hand of Mithradath, the treasurer, and counted them out to Sheshbazai, the prince of Judah." What was happening here is that as far back as in the times of Isaiah, the Lord spoke, prophesied about King Sariah in the book of Isaiah, chapter 45. This king was appointed by God that after the captivity of the train of Israel, this would be the king whom the Lord would use to free the Jews from the Babylonian captivity. So the Lord, in his sovereign power and authority, he spoke about him coming in the times of Isaiah, way before Israel was taken to captivity, because dating back, the last group that went to captivity, it was 587 B.C. So even before the last batch went to captivity, the Lord was already speaking about them coming back to the land. So when you look at the prophets, even from the perspective of a prophet Jeremiah, he even specifies the number of years that is going to be 70 weeks in Babylon. So the Lord not only poured out his indignation by allowing the holy nation to go to exile, but out of his mercy, he made the means for Israel to come back to the promised land. Now coming back to focus to the scripture that we have just read. Now Ezra, as he opens, he is speaking about the operation of King Sariah. He is now in the throne. He says, "The Lord stirred up the heart of King Sariah to make a decree." So King Sariah made a proclamation throughout his domain, bearing in mind that it was first the Babylonian kingdom, and then it was the Maids and then the Persians. So as he is sitting on the throne, it is the kingdom of Persia that is reigning. So at that time, Persia was the superpower in the world and Sariah was the head of the kingdom. So when he made this decree, he made a proclamation throughout his domain that Israel, the Jews must be freed, and he also made a charge that they must be helped, even with articles of gold and silver for the building of the house of the Lord back in Jerusalem. So now what I want us to see here is the rule of law. The word or the scripture that is before us says that King Sariah brought out the articles of the house of the Lord, which Nebuchadnezzar had taken from Jerusalem and put it in the temple of God. And the second part, I just wanted to, I just want to look at the second part more carefully. It says, "Sariah, king of Persia, brought them out by the hand of Mithradath, the treasurer." So it means there is a chain of command. The king spoke from the throne and then the subjects, because Mithradath was given authority over the treasury of the king in the kingdom. So the command did not originate from the treasury, but it originated from the throne of the king. So we see the command cascading from the throne of the king of Persia. Mind you, we made a highlight before we begin that the decree did not even originate from Sariah himself, but it originated from God, because what Mithradath was receiving, he was receiving a charge that was preordained to surface in his time, because Sariah, as we have alluded to earlier on, was prophesied back in Isaiah, in the book of Isaiah, chapter 45. But now we see the command or the manifestation of the word of God surfacing only in this dispensation, the time of Ezra. Alright, so it's the command that came out of God, and it was declared prophetically before it manifested, and it awaited time, and the Lord stirred up the heart of Sariah in the appointed time, at the time where the exiles had to be liberated. So the command came, it welled up from the spirit of Sariah, and because he was given dominion, he was a king, he spoke it out, and it was a decree, and it cascaded from Sariah to Mithradath, the treasurer. Alright, so the word of God says, it was Sariah, the king of Persia, who brought out the articles, but through the hand of who, Mithradath. So that's the rule of law. The king speaks, and whatever he speaks, it becomes the rule of authority, and everybody in the dominion of the kingdom is subject to what he speaks. So the word that comes out of the king, it becomes law, it becomes an ordinance. So as they moved, as Mithradath moved, it was, though it was Mithradath who was moving, but it was King Sariah who was doing the job, because the law was coming from God through King Sariah to Mithradath. So we see now the chain of command, or rather the economy of God, that if you take out King Sariah from the equation, the will of God pertaining the return of the articles of gold from the temple of King Nebuchadnezzar, it would have not been made possible. So it has to be God speaking through the prophets Jeremiah and Isaiah, and there had to be the king on the throne, and then the subjects. So we see the chain of command from God, who is unseen, manifesting in the natural domain. So the law, or rather the word of God, becomes law in that sense, because as it comes out, it dictates action. It dictates the cause of action, and it dictates even the cause of the events in the domain, in the domain of the king that is in operation at that point. Alright, so we are going to see further illustration of this principle as we move along. So we can see just a pattern, that it's God, it's the prophets, it's the king, and then the treasurer, chain of command from God Almighty, manifesting his will pertaining his people, Israel coming out of Babylon, back to Jerusalem. Alright, second term that we want to illustrate is the term "subjection". Again, we are moving in the times of the rule of the Roman Empire. The Lord Jesus Christ is now walking the earth. It's the book of Matthew, chapter 8, verse number nine. We are going to read from the New King James Version. It reads as follows: "For I also am a man under authority, having soldiers under me; and I say to this one, 'Go!' and he goes; and to the other, 'Come!' and he comes; and to my servants, 'Do this!' and he does it." Alright, so what is happening here is that the Lord is, as he is walking in his earthly ministry, we find this passage of scripture after the Lord has laid the fundamental principles that are operating in the kingdom of God. Matthew, chapter 5, 6, and 7, that's where he lay what is often referred to as the sermon on the mount. So after this, we find this passage of scripture whereby he is having an encounter with a centurion. So now this is a government official, a Roman government official. So he is a centurion, he is giving power, authority over the hundred. Alright, so now this centurion had an issue. His servant was laying sick at home. So when he places, or when he asks for help from the Lord, the Lord agrees that he will come to heal the servant in his home, but the centurion opted that the Lord not come under his roof, and then he makes this profound statement. He says, "For I also am a man under authority, having soldiers under me." So he is alluding to the fact that he is a man not of authority, but a man under authority. Mind you, he is a centurion, a government official, whose head at that time was Caesar. Alright, so it means he was under the chain of command from the Roman government that was operating or headed in Rome, though the territory that was, the territory where he was operating was the Syrian territory, but he was reporting from Rome. So because he was under authority, he had a backup from the Roman government. So whatever was happening in his small portion of land where he was placed, he had a backup from Rome. So in terms of power, in terms of authority, when you see the centurion back then, it was as good as seeing Caesar himself. So when he says, "I'm a man under authority", he means exactly that, that he is wearing the authority of Caesar in the foreign land. Alright, now he says, "Having soldiers under me", so we can see that there is kind of a sandwich kind of a situation here. So the centurion is in between the higher authority, and also underneath him, there are people who are placed under his authority. So it means authority flows from above him, through him, even unto his subjects. Alright, so now he says, "And I say to this one, 'Go!' and he goes; and to the other, 'Come!' and he comes; and to my servants, 'Do this!' and he does it." So he is linking the two. He is linking the fact that he is under authority, and you can see that by him being under authority, it allows him to be able to exercise the authority over the dominion by which he is placed by his government. So by him submitting under higher authorities, this gives his word the power to be executed by those placed under his rule. Right, so now he is making mention of this pertaining the scenario that the word of God is addressing right here. So the issue here was the healing of his servant. So now the Lord, when he hears these words from the centurion, this is how he responds. We are going to jump to verse number 13, same chapter, reading from the New King James once again. "Then Jesus said to the centurion, 'Go your way as you have believed; so let it be done for you.' And his servant was healed that same hour." So now when the Lord hears the confession of the centurion, when the Lord appreciates his understanding of spiritual authority, he is pleased, and then he releases the word that in its effect healed the servant right on the spot. Now, attention here, I want us to look at how swift the response was from the Lord pertaining healing of the servant, because we can here establish a link between the understanding of authority and the manifestation of the power of God. So it means what the conductor is to electricity, it is what submission to authority is to the flow of the power of God. So because of the submission of the centurion and the heartfelt understanding of spiritual authority from the centurion, even though he was a Gentile, this moved the heart of God mightily, so that power went out of him to go straight to where it was needed. So the word of God says, "And his servant was healed that same hour." So it means right from the onset, if we are to see the manifestation of the power of God, it means the power of God cannot manifest lest there is order. Alright, lest there is subjection. So the centurion illustrated what we defined earlier on, the principle of subjection, that he was under hupus, he was under thasso, he was arranged, he was maintaining an order under a higher power, so that as he was submitting under a higher power, then the principle, or rather the action of submission, allowed the power to flow from the head to the lowest region. Remember the word of God in the book of Psalms 133. It speaks about the granting or the pronouncement of the blessing upon the unity of the brethren. So unity is an order under a pattern that is established by God, and when men put themselves under that order, arrange themselves under that order, so we see action from the face of the earth, and then we see the response of heaven when subjection, or rather arrangement under order, is seen. So the pattern of unity attracts the pronouncement of the blessing of God. So when the Psalmist writes, he says, "It is like the oil flowing from the top from the head of Aaron, flowing down his beard." So again, we see the similar kind of a principle at play here. So as the Lord sees the heart that is subjected, sees authority in the centurion, he saw a conduit for the flow of the healing oil from his head through the heart and the faith of the centurion down to the slave girl that was at the home of the centurion. So we can see two distinct patterns here. The source, the Lord, the source of the anointing, how God anointed Jesus of Nazareth with the holocaust and power, that he went about doing good and healing those who were held under the tyranny of the devil, for God was with him. So the Lord, the source of the anointing, and we see him, and we see the centurion bearing first faith, but he did not only bear faith, but he also had a subjective spirit. So the faith and the subjective spirit combined together formed a passage, or rather a pipe, for the flow of the healing oil from the Lord through the faith and the subjection of the centurion to the slave girl at home. So the amazing thing is that the slave girl was not in the vicinity of where the Lord was, but they were at a distance, geographically speaking. But when the word was pronounced, the word traveled, and it was able to reach the slave girl and perform the miracle of healing, even without touching. So we can appreciate the power of submission. We can appreciate the power of the law of subjection from this scripture, that it quickens even the power of God. Moving right along, right before us, we can see this is one of the tallest buildings in the world. It's situated in the United Arab Emirates. It is 163 stories high, but good as it is on the outside and high as it is in terms of altitude. This is the external order that we can see before us, and these floors, you can imagine, it's a commercial space, that there are many activities that are supported by this building externally. Alright, but there are few people who appreciate the foundation of the building. So just as the building is high in altitude, so its state, or rather its functioning or its stability, necessitated that the foundation be built in a peculiar way. So just as the building is super instead of its size and its altitude, but also there is an unseen part of the building that people do not see, it's the foundation. So this is the order underneath the foundation of that structure. We said it is 163 stories. So what we see before us is the foundation of that building. Going down, these are the pillars of iron, because the kind of ground where the building is erected is sandy. So when the builders and all those who were involved in putting, erecting the structure, it was necessary for them to dig deep and beyond the sandy, the sandy structure of the soil, all the way to the part which is beginning to be the rock. So they had to dig deeper into the bedrock and take out and scoop the volume of the sand out and drive iron pillars all the way to the bedrock. So from the surface to the bedrock, the distance is about 50 meters, which is half of the length of a football pitch. So that's how deep the foundation is. So as you can see, that even the pillars are arranged in a certain order, and they are arranged in a certain order, and they are driven far beyond what the eye can see. So what we are illustrating here is that for every structure or for everything that God builds, there has got to be an underneath arrangement. And going back to the centurion, the Lord was not only looking at the confession or the words of the centurion per se, but as you can see and cannot is, that whenever the Lord speaks or has an encounter with an individual, he does not only listen to the words, but he speaks, or rather he responds to the state of the heart. So when the centurion is speaking, conversing with the Lord, the Lord was able to detect that in his heart, he was indeed subjected. So there has got to be an attitude of submission in the unseen realm of the heart, because we present a form of subjection on the external before our superiors, but yet in our hearts, we cast them. So just as the building that we have shown, the external beauty and the altitude cannot, could not be supported if the foundation that we have shown was absent. So the higher the building, the higher the altitude of the building, the stronger the foundation must have been, and the deeper the iron pillars must have been, and they had to go all the way to the bedrock. Remember what the Lord said in Matthew, chapter 7, speaking about the wise builder and the foolish builder. He said, "A person who builds on sand is a foolish builder", because when the storm comes, that building, whatever he builds, would be shaken away. But when he speaks about the wise builder, he said, "The person who builds his house on the rock, he terms him as a wise builder." So we see that principle at play, because that foundation, that building, was placed on the bedrock, on the rock. So now we see another dimension of this, that as we submit ourselves unto authority, we are affording ourselves a chance to be built on that rock, on that solid foundation that is going to cause God to manifest in our sin, just as the power of God was seen healing the slave girl that belongs to the household of the centurion. Alright, so having spoken about the centurion and his submission, I would like us to advance further and see now the spheres of governance, because we are coming from Romans, chapter 13, verse number one. The word or the scripture there speaks about governing authorities. So it speaks about authorities in plural. So governing the spheres of governance. So under the spheres of governance, we are going to appreciate the fact that as we live, we are under subjection, and we owe allegiance to external governance. We are under subjection and we owe allegiance to 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 external governmental rules. To fall under control or authority of another. Because if 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 we are not um subjected to one another. And if we are not subjected to higher powers, then there is going to be a deconstruction of order. And what we call the state of anarchy will come in. Alright, so as we look at subjection, we'll learn that we are under external governments. And we must begin to acknowledge the governments that God has set on earth, alright? So now the governments that the Lord has set on earth, they come in three categories. First one is the church government. This is the supreme government according to God Almighty. We see in the book of Isaiah, chapter nine, verse number six, whereby it is one of the messianic um passages of scripture. Eh it says, for unto us the son is given, the child is born and the son is given. And then after that, it says, and the government shall be upon his shoulders. So now the government is upon whom, the Lord Jesus Christ of Nazareth, in him. A being who Theos, anthropos, because it speaks about the child uh being 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 born and the son being given. So he came um in that nature, being hundred percent God and hundred percent man. For the sole purpose of governing. So he is given in the in his office as the son of God. He is giving authority over all things, seen and unseen. In the book of Colossians, chapter one, verse number sixteen and seventeen. And the apostle Paul, under the inspiration of the Holy Spirit, speaks about him uh being preeminent. Being taking the first of uh being the first, the first one of all creation. So in that sense, being the first one of all creation, it speaks about his rule over everything. That the eye can see, over everything that is created, that is seen or unseen. Now that government, as 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 the prophet um spoke, was upon the shoulders of the Lord Jesus Christ. But when you look at the book of Ephesians, chapter one, from twenty-one to twenty-three. Now he is speak, the 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 Holy Spirit uses Apostle Paul. To give us an understanding now that the Lord, God the Father, as he raised the Lord Jesus Christ from the dead. Eh far above all rule, far above all powers and principalities. He subjected everything under his feet. And he further says that he did that for the body, the church. So if the government is upon the shoulders of the Lord Jesus Christ and we are the bo- and we are the body of the Lord Jesus Christ of Nazareth, it means. This government, this sphere of governance, the church government, is upon the church. Alright, so the next, the next uh 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 governmental eh sphere is the political government. So this is the authority that God gives on a political sphere um to kings. And 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 even to governments in the present day and age. An example eh is 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 taken from Daniel, chapter four, verse number thirty-six. Whereby eh we find King Nebuchadnezzar, after a a period of seven years, whereby the Lord humbled him. Because of pride and the word of God says, after his sanity returned. He was able to 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 discern that indeed there is God in heaven. And indeed, he was able to discern that even his dominion, his kingdom. He did not appoint himself, but it was God himself who placed him there. So now when 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 he makes the statement in chapter four, verse number thirty-six. He speaks about him being established and his splendor returning to him and also his subjects. So because the Babylonian government was the, the Babylonian empire was the. The 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 greatest empire of the time. So there was no greater power than King Nebuchadnezzar at at the time and age. So it means um the one who did the the restoration, the one who did the establishment. And the one who returned the splendor, it was God Almighty himself. So we can see that the the Babylonian rule, pagan as it was. But it was an authority that was given to men and eh and the throne and the person to sit and rule over that dominion. Nebuchadnezzar was appointed by God for a specific period, right? So that's your political um government. And then lastly, we find family government. And this is the family structure, eh the fundamental unit eh of of every society, the family. We find this um as Apostle Paul writes, first Corinthians, chapter eleven. Whereby he speaks about the hierarchy of of God in the family unit. He says eh the head of every husband, of every man is is Christ. And then and then the head of every woman is 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 the is the 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 wife. So we see now Christ and Christ is submitting to God the Father, so it's God the Father Christ. And then the husband, the wife, and then obviously the children. So we can see another sphere of ruling in a family household. And the Holy Scripture is speaking about or teaching in the first Corinthians, chapter eleven, verse number three. So it means eh roundabout, the word that we read earlier on the scripture. It says, every soul must be subject. So it means we do not have a a room not to be subject to any. So first of all, we are to submit in the family structure, under the hierarchy that God has made. And then external, the cluster of families, we've got what? We've got um societies and societies are giving the rule of 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 governments, political government. And then over the political governments, we've got the church or rather the government of heaven. So in that order, so it means there is no gray area whereby souls are not to be subject to authority. As it is laid by God. So so we 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 can now see light that whenever eh there is disruption. It is, it can be owed to the fact that the enemy tempers or alters the structures of governments. Either in the family or either in government or in the church. So the business of of the enemy is to disrupt the hierarchy of authority that God has placed. Because if this order is intact, we are sure that we are going to see the manifestation of heaven. Wherever this order is, is 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 seen, is visible, whether in the church, in government, or also at families. Now, just to illustrate this, when the Lord gave Moses the pattern. He gave him the tabernacle because the desire of God was to dwell amongst men. So he took Moses to the mountain and then he gave him the pattern of the tabernacle. And he gave him an instruction that he must construct a tabernacle according to the pattern that he has seen. Hebrews chapter um um eh eight, verse number three to five. So now fast forwarding, so when the tabernacle was built according to the order that God has placed. The word of God says, the cloud um came in, the cloud of glory came into the temple. And the priest could not minister, could not continue to minister because the cloud filled the temple of the Lord. Same thing happened eh after the 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 house of the Lord was dedicated in the days of Solomon. The fire came down and also the glory of the Lord manifested physically. So now, now that's the construction of the temple, the details, even with the the ark of Noah. God gave him the specification, the type of wood and the dimensions. So as Noah built the ark according to the specification of the Lord, that was symbolic of the execution of the instruction of God. It was symbolic of the authority and the rule of God being observed by men. So we see whenever that manifests in earth obedience, subjection, we see God responding. By opening up the heavens. In the case of Noah, it was the opening up of the fountains of the great deep. Both the windows of heaven and the fountains of the of the great deep and the coming of the dilatous water. So the water was symbolizing the approval of God, of the authority, of his authority being seen on earth. And even in the tabernacle and in the house of the Lord, both the times of Moses and the times of Solomon, the glory coming in. Was symbolic of God moving in, being attracted by 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 the by his authority being seen. In earth, crystallized by the obedience of his subjects, right? So we can actually see that whenever the whenever the enemy comes. He his sole purpose is to disrupt the patterns of God. Because the disruption of the patterns of God equals the shutting of the heavens. Moving on, so we are looking at the manifestation of the power of God. Because nowadays eh we need to move. Um not in our own strength, but we need to move in the power of the Almighty God. So it means just as there are principles of electricity, there are principles of magnetism and also of electricity. And that are needed in order for one to harness the natural power of electricity. So that it may bring civilization and it may bring aid even unto our everyday life. There are also principles that must be observed for the power of God to be seen here on earth. Because the word of God says, we wrestle not against flesh and blood, but we wrestle against what? Powers and principalities and spirit of wickedness in hard places. So it means we cannot advance the kingdom of God here on earth if we are working in our own strength and power. Now, there are five fundamental words that are translated as power in the New Testament. And it is needful for us to understand each and every one of them before we can move on because. Eh where we are going, we are going to appreciate that us being able to submit fully unto God. We will be able to walk and to be able to tap into his power. First word is dynamis. And this one we find in in the book of of Romans, chapter one, verse number sixteen. For I am not ashamed of the gospel of Christ, for it is power of God unto salvation to everyone that believe. And that believeth. Now, the word power there is the word dynamis. Now, what kind of power is this? It is the miracle working power of God that one receives as we eh as 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 we accept the Lord Jesus Christ as our Lord. And Savior. And this is the power that makes what is impossible possible, alright? Now, moving right along, the second word that we encounter in the New Testament. That is translated as power is the word ischas, which means ability of force or strength. Now eh this um is 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 a is is a word that gives us courage. That indeed our God is powerful. Because if 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 you take a picture of the flooding of 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 a river. To when it overflows its banks. The water there, because of the momentum and because of the things that are carried downstream. It has power. It has power to wipe away everything as it progresses from high to low. Now, the word ischas, it is alluding to that dimension of God, the ability, the force. The ability of force or the strength of the power of God. Now, we see reference first, second Thessalonians, chapter one, verse number nine, reading as follows. Um who shall be punished with everlasting destruction from the presence of the Lord and from the glory of his power? So that word power there is translated as ischas, as we have seen. So when the Lord comes, he will come in full force, such that the people, such that. When when wha- wha- when when he comes, the celestial power will be shaken. So that's the power, the impact of the coming of the Lord. So the celestial power will be shaken, the sun and even the moon and even the stars will be shaken. This, this is owed to this dimension of his power, alright? Another word, dimension of power is the word katos, eh which is um another word that is translated as power. So now this has a connotation eh of 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 perfection. Alright, so it's the power that is employed. Or rather the working of power in bringing about perfection and complexion, amen. So now, this is um. More practical, when you look at an example of a sculpture, a person who does the craft. So at the earlier stage, let's say it's it's a wooden sculpture that must be crafted. The image is in the mind of the artist. But at earlier stages, eh the tool is just to cut the. The external mapping of the image that must be created out of the wood. But the working of the artist at the initiation of the project is not the same. As the working of an artist when he is about to put finishing touches. Even the tools that he uses at the start are not the same as the tools that he uses. As he polishes, he makes the final touches upon his masterpiece. So Kratos speaks about the power of God as he brings about perfection. So we are in need to work, to tap into this dimension of power of God because as we can see. That we are heading towards the end times and we are the workmanship of God. So the Lord, we are in need to work in this dimension of power because it's time for final touches to be made. In the body of Christ, it's time for the bride, the bride of Christ to to be perfected. According to Matthew, chapter five, verse number forty forty-eight. The word of God says, ye must be perfect because your heavenly Father is perfect. So we are to walk in this dimension, the katos dimension of power of God for perfection in every area. Mind you, when we are speaking about power, we are not speaking about power of raising the dead, that is good and well. But predominantly, we are speaking about the perfection of the image and the likeness of God. Now, that takes power, the translation of the mind, the changing of the mindset, the changing of perception. Because the word of God says in the book of Timothy, that the the church, the the church of the latter days. And that the the church of the end times is symbolized as having um. The form of godliness but denying the power of God. So we have the word of God, but we are yet to allow the perfection. The the perfecting power of God to come into place in our lives. So we need to walk in the katos, the katos dimension of the power of God. In bringing about the imprint of the image and the likeness of God in our lives as individuals and also as the church. Right, now, looking at another term, the term akay. This also is a a term that is translated as power. We see it um, it 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 can be described as eh the beginning of rule. The beginning of rule, the beginning of rule. We see this term being used by Luke as alludes eh as he speaks about the. The Pharisees or rather the the, yes, the Jewish opposition, religious leaders. As they were trying to find fault in the Lord Jesus Christ. So they took a band of men and they projected them or they sent them to Jesus. Just to trick him so that by him, by 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 them tricking eh the Lord. He may speak amiss so that as he speaks amiss, they may take that as an accusation. So that him he, so that they can persecute him. We see this um in 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 eh coming to play in the life of Stephen. Stephen was also lied upon because they said he blasphemed God. And also he blasphemed the law of Moses. So as a result, people ganged together and he was stoned. So they were trying to, they were they were they were still advancing the same tactic. But the Lord was able to perceive their craftiness because they asked him as a a simple question pertaining taxes. They asked him whether it is lawful for 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 him to play, to pay taxes together with his with his disciples. And then he was able to answer them accordingly and he was able to see that their heart was not in them receiving. And information or rather knowledge from him out of a pure heart, but they had an ulterior motive. And he was able to point it out right there and they told them that why do you want to trap me? I'm paraphrasing. So in then gave them, eh he he asked them to give, to take a denarius. And he was able to tell them that they must give what belongs to Caesar and and they must also give what belongs to God. and, and they must also give what belongs to God. So in that way, um, he was able to escape that trap. So the word akay appeared in the book of Luke, Chapter twenty, verse number twenty. When, 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 when the word says that so that they might deliver him unto the power and authority of the governor. So the word power there is the word akay, which speaks about the power and the authority of the religious leaders of the day. Alright, so the last, uh, term that is translated as power is exousia. So we can see this, um, term also in the book of Luke, Chapter seventeen, verse number nineteen, as we read. And the servant returned with joy, saying, Lord, even the devils are subject to us through thy name. And he said unto them, I beheld Satan as, I beheld Satan as lightning fall from heaven. Behold, I give you power to dread on serpents and scorpions and over all the power of the enemy, and nothing shall by any means hurt you. So the word that is translated as power there is the word exousia. So, and, and, and he goes on, um, so he goes on to say, the word exousia before can go on, it simply means freedom of action is the right. Even John uses this term in the book of John, Chapter one, verse number twelve. He said to those who accepted him, he gave them power to become sons of God. So the word power there is not dynamism or any of the other terms that we have explained earlier on, but it's the term exousia. So this is the power, it speaks about the delegated authority. Alright, so now this delegated authority, we also see it in the Great Commission when he says, all power, again, the word power there is not dynamism, but it's also exousia. He says, all power in heaven and in earth has been given to me. Therefore, go and make disciples of all nations, baptize them in the name of the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit, teach them everything that I have taught you. Behold, I am with you till the end of the age. Amen. So the word also there is, is exousia, freedom of action. So now, this term exousia has a connotation, it has a connection with the will. It has a connection with the will of men, the sovereignty of God, uh, being a portioned, attached to the submissive will of men. Alright, now as we move on, consolidating what we have studied, the power dimensions, all five of them. We, um, zooming into this one central point for our teaching as we are wrapping up, that heaven is here, backing us up with all types of power. But there has got to be a, a method or a way of us tapping into this power of God for the extension of his kingdom here on earth. Now, step by step, the extension of the kingdom of God being the world populated by sons of God. According to Genesis, Chapter one, verse number twenty-six, the Lord says, now let us make men in our own likeness, in our own image, let them have dominion. And then he speaks about the threefold dominion, the air, the land, and the sea. But dominion before likeness and image is impossible, is not scriptural. So we are to tap into the dimension of power of God first for the restoration of the image and the likeness of God using the law of subjection by submission. Let us look at James as we wrap up. He says, but he gives more grace, therefore he says, God resists the proud but gives grace to the humble. Therefore, submit to God, resist the devil, and he will flee from you. Our focus is in verse number seven. Quite often, we like to quote half of this scripture. We like the part that says, resist the devil and he will flee. He is not going to go anywhere lest you submit first. So what is in the heart of the Lord this season is that we are to come back and be submissive to him. We are to observe the law of subjection. We have to be subject unto all types of authority that he has placed over our heads. The authority in the church, the authority, the government authority, and even the authority, the hierarchy of God's structure of authority in the family households. All of that must be intact. Because if we are working outside the demarcations of the authority of God in all those three spheres, then we are not going to have success in driving out the devil in our lives, in our families, in our communities, and in the world at large. So submission to God will give us power now to confront the devil up to the point where he will flee from us. Okay, now we see, so it's an equation, so submission to God plus the power to resist equals the devil fleeing from wherever we are. Now, let's see an example, the Lord in the Carinae of Gethsemane. He was able to illustrate this principle perfectly. We are reading Luke, Chapter twenty-two, verse number forty-one to forty-two. You, King James, he was withdrawn from them about a storm's storm, and he knelt down and prayed, saying, Father, if it is your will, take this cup away from me. Nevertheless, not my will, but yours be done. Pay careful attention that the flesh and the pressure around the Lord pushed him to up the gate or not to go on with the will of the Father. But the last portion of the scripture, we see the will switch. We see the will of the, the Lord Jesus Christ as men coming under, remember hoopoe, under, and tasso to arrange or to, to, to set order, under. So we see the, the, the will of God coming under the will of the Father. Now, as that happens, we see the next portion of the scripture as Luke is giving us the account. Then we see now, he says, then an angel appeared to him from heaven, strengthening him and being in agony, he prayed more earnestly. Then his sweat became like great drops of blood falling to the ground. So heaven opened as the will, the, the will switch happened. As the will of our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ came under subjection to the will of the Father, the heavens were open and an angel came down to strengthen the Lord. Now, what amazed me in this part of scripture is the fact that we see God being strengthened. Because the Lord in his, in his capacity as God need not be strengthened by creature. Need not be strengthened by agents of an angel because it's all-powerful God. He is the weight who is omnipotent and even omnipresent. But we see because of his assignment here on earth, it needed submission. So even though he was able to strengthen himself, but he chose to be strengthened by the agents of God using an angel. So he was able to submit up to that point that even though he was the most powerful God, he was the God Almighty having power even to, to do things on his own, but he chose not to. He submitted his will unto the will of the Father and he was strengthened by an angel. So we can see now that, yes, we see a pattern, submission. And we see, we see now submission and we see the devil fleeing because the resistance was due to sin, even though the Lord had no sin in his body. But it was due to, um, the fact that he was praying for me and you because of the law of sin that was inhabiting our flesh and blood. So as he submitted, he was receiving his power to keep on going in the plan of God. So now we are at a point whereby strength has gone away, has been severed from our lives. But now the good news is that as we submit to God, as we submit to the hierarchy of destruction, the authority of God, just as the Lord did, heaven is ready to send aid, heaven is ready to strengthen us to go on. The word of God says, being in agony, so the pain didn't, was not taken away. But he prayed in the midst of pain, was given power to pray, even in the midst of pain, so that he may be able to move from the stage of Gethsemane all the way to the cross. Submission equaling the power to, to even unseat the devil. So as we wrap up, um, we are seeing the grace of God that is before us that as we observe, as we walk under his authority, even though we may be out of strength because of various trials and various oppressions of the devil in, in many corners of our lives, the word of God says, submit to God and resist the devil and he will flee from you. So if, if we walk in submission to the authority of God, the authority that he has placed in the church, even the external authority that he has placed, um, in, 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 in government and also in the families, as we observe his authority, just as he quickened the way to heal the slave of the centurion. The word of God says, the slave girl, well, the slave of, of the authority, of the, the centurion was healed in that hour. As we come back, as we trip, as we make this will switch, submitting ourselves under the authority of God, we are guaranteed to see God operating in all five dimensions of his power in our lives. In our lives emanating, overflowing, unseating the devil in our families and also bringing about order and operation and the spread of the kingdom of God, even through the church. As we come to an end of our teaching, I would like us to pray that the Lord may grant us a spirit that is submissive. Because remember, principles do not change. Even Daniel in the land of Babylon, in chapter six, when the king came, uh, after the decree was made that whosoever petitions another God would be put to the den of lions. Indeed, they put him in the den of lions, but the lion, the lions could not touch him. But when he comes, Daniel, Chapter six, verse number twenty, two, twenty-two, when the king comes the next morning, Daniel speaks about this secret. He says, because innocence was found before, was found before you and before God. So Daniel was blameless pertaining the authority of the king and he was also blameless pertaining the authority of God Almighty. So we are to pray for that kind of a spirit, the submissive spirit. But we see that even, um, the authority of the land, the, the decrees of the land was coming against the supreme decree of the government of God. But Daniel was able to harken unto the decrees of the most high God, unto the decrees of the government of God. And we see the supreme court of, of heaven overriding even the laws of the government of the land. So that's where we are, that even though the decrees of the governments of the land may detour or may come as opposite to the decrees of the government of God, ours is to observe and be able to have a discerning spirit and to, and to pray for the spirit of might, the spirit of wisdom and might, just as Daniel did, to indeed stay under subjection of God as we pray. In the name of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ of Nazareth, we thank you, Lord, for your word. We pray for the spirit of wisdom and mighty so that we may be able to walk in the law of subjection so that heaven and the power of heaven may be made manifest through the church in the present day and age. We pray that this your word, the Lord God Almighty, may help us to accomplish this end not by might, but by the power of the true Holy Spirit who lives on the inside of us. Glory and honor be given unto you now and forevermore in Jesus' mighty name. Amen.